Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this Bader City Council meeting. It's on November 8th, 2018. It is 6:01 PM. My name is Joe Schei, Councilman. Mayor Smith is absent tonight. Scheduled absent. Roll call.
Judy Costello. She did report to us last week that she would not be here, so that that would be considered excused. Jason Daley.
Here.
Joe Schei.
Here.
Mike Parsons.
Here.
Leona, Sandra Hunter. Here. And they already reported on the mayor's.
Yep. Alright. Excellent. Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The mayor's report. The next council meeting will be held on November 29th. There will be one week delayed because of Thanksgiving. Also, Jill, you had a report on those speed signs.
Yes.
For the school district area.
Just one more note on that meeting. There is a workshop, so that will be at 5 o'clock. And there will be the final public hearing for the... Last opportunity for the community to come and speak, so just FYI on that. Yes, I did check with the school district about the speed signs. And they said that actually they don't have any jurisdiction as a school district. What? He gave me... Jim Mabbett, the superintendent, gave me the RCWs. And what has to happen is the city has to declare a speed zone, which can be declared for a playground or a school or other reasoning. And then, once that's been declared, then the state actually has money set aside for putting signs up for speed zones. So we would have to contact the State Department of Transportation. So they are the ones most likely that took the signs down. The school said that they did not take the signs down when the school went away. But it was probably the state, because they're the ones that fund those. So I have a call into the Department of Transportation to find out who we need to talk to about that. And I will be checking to find out how exactly we declare it a speed zone. So we'll get more information.
Even though it's a sign on the building itself, are they gonna put something up there stating that it's a school?
Stating it's a school. I did ask Mr. Mabbett that question. He said, yes, they do have plans to do a permanent sign. They're in process. Sounds like they haven't gotten super far, but they do have plans to do that.
Thank you.
Yes?
Does the city council have to approve that speed zone?
I have no idea. That's... I'm still finding out exactly what it takes to do that. It says that the city has to declare. I'm assuming that means the city council, but I don't know. We'll find out more about what we have to do exactly.
Alright, that's it for the mayor's report. Are there any council reports?
The 4th of July, I talked to Rich Bader. I don't know if we want to just put this in with the budgeting stuff, but his bid for it came to $10,000. So just to throw it out there. This last year, there was... I don't remember if it was $3,000 from the city or $5,000 from the city, something like that.
$3,000, I believe.
$3,000. And then I kicked in $1,600 out of my own pocket. But... And then both Wolverine fireworks and... Why can't I think? The one in Winlock.
Jake's.
Jake's fireworks both donated also. And then Rich Bader and his crew donated their time for last year's fireworks show. So this year, to get what we had last year, it looks like it's gonna be around the $10,000 mark. So... Yeah, he said it's about a $17,000 show. If it was anyone else, so wow.
Alright.
Just to throw it out there.
Good. Yes?
Is that the man? He's a professional fireworks person?
Yep.
Do we have to have a professional fireworks? Are these professional fireworks?
They are not professional fireworks. However, the amount of work that he did and the show that he put on is... And it also, the insurance. He will, this year, he will be a professional firework in the state of Washington. He was... He's licensed in other states. But Wolverine fireworks asked that he be come licensed, because they're going to use him for other stuff. And so he will be a licensed firework. But we don't need a licensed one.
But is the insurance cheaper if we have?
The insurance...
He comes with his own insurance.
Yeah, he covered it with his own insurance.
So that does save us quite a bit.
Okay. Stop.
You don't seriously think the city is going to fund this $10,000?
No, I don't think so. I'm just throwing it out there. That's what it's going to be. If we... If the city funds it, or if everybody gets together and puts it together, and the city donates some to it, that's what the cost would be. So, yeah. Not that it's going on the budget, because like last year, I said, take it all the way off, because I don't go to the movies unless I can pay for my milk first.
Yeah, that's a lot of money.
So...
Any other reports?
Oh. We are delivering Thanksgiving baskets. No. Did you know the exact day? You were at the last meeting?
November 18th was the day you said was the last day to donate. That's what you said at the last meeting.
Oh. And yes, that's the day that we are delivering, so...
Oh, you're delivering on the 18th?
Yeah, we are delivering on the 18th.
Oh, so that can't be the last day to donate, then?
Are you sure you're delivering on the 18th?
Oh, we're delivering on the 19th, so, so yeah.
Okay, so the 18th.
So my last statement was correct. Okay. Last day to donate is on the 18th. I just wanted to re-throw that one back out there.
And you're taking food and money?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, because last year you just kind of wanted money.
Well, we get specific things, but I kind of set a list last time with like, you know, basic stuff that we use for Thanksgiving, you know, candy, this and that. But generally, we like to get funds, just so we go down there and get exact amount of cans.
Right.
And we know that they're not been sitting on someone's shelves for two years, or just decided to clear their shelf off and give them to you, you know, and they're expired. We just don't want to give back, kind of, anyway, but we'll take whatever. We'll go through that. So anyways.
Alright. Alright, there's another council reports. Moving on to agenda approval. Do we have any additions to the agenda tonight? Nope?
I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda meeting for 11/8/2018.
We have a motion from Ms. Sandra Hunter to approve the agenda. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Daley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Minutes' approval.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes for the city council workshop and the meeting for 10/25/2018 as written.
A motion by Mr. Daley to approve the minutes as written. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Sandra Hunter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Voucher approval.
I'll make a motion that we approve vouchers for the first half of November at $112,163,000... Or $112,163.84.
We have a motion by Mr. Daley to approve the vouchers. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Sandra Hunter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Special reports from Lewis County Sheriff's Department.
So the county chief per... October. So there's 237 contacts. There's a total of 15 calls. One of them was on shift. And if you see the calls there, there's two... There's also traffic inside there, which is 19 traffic stops, two infractions issued, and three criminal traffic. So criminal traffic are those three that's driving by license suspended. That's what that is. That's a criminal, so... And for the month, there was one malicious mischief. And that's the only crime for the month, other than those criminal citations for traffic. So our traffic stops are up.
Nice.
Because they've been working at certain locations, so... But we do let a lot of people go by and not give them tickets right off the bat, so...
Is the sheriff doing more patrols during the bus stop area? I know that was a concern by a couple of the parents. And I talked to one of the parents this morning, and she said she's only seen the sheriff down there one time, sheriff car, since she complained about the... You saw it on Facebook, right? That people are speeding past the bus stop there, and they're not paying attention to children leaving out on 506. Have you had any information on that?
Mm-hmm.
No?
But a bus stop is not... You can't reduce the speed of the bus just because it's a bus stop?
Well, it's not just reducing the speed. They're driving like they're on fire. They're driving way too fast, and it's dark, and you've got children out there.
Yeah, I don't know anything about it. Did they report to the state patrol, since it's the highway?
No, they reported to the sheriff. And they said the sheriff's office told them that they would do more patrols, and she's only seen them once.
Yeah, because if it's traffic on the highway, on the state highway there, we don't do that that much, because that's a state highway, and the state patrol is jurisdiction over that.
But you can.
But we can, yeah, we can. But we don't... We don't do it as much as the state patrol does it. Because the state patrol, that's... Their primary duty is to traffic enforcement on state highways.
So maybe a call to the state patrol would be helpful as well.
Yeah.
Maybe that person needs to contact them.
And not the sheriff.
Because it's still 35 out there, no matter whether it's a bus stop or not. Now, if we haven't gotten anything from any buses that say that they've had any violations of bus stop... Our bus paddles for the lights on the buses. And they can give us that... They usually give us that information, but we haven't gotten anything on that.
I think she called the sheriff's office, so you wouldn't have known about that?
Yeah, now, the question is...
The bus drivers usually call.
The lady on Facebook said she contacted the sheriff's office.
Yeah, the problem is, is that if they call the sheriff's office, it's on a state highway, dispatch will refer them right directly to the state patrol, because it's not our primary jurisdiction to do state highways. So if they call the dispatch center, they may be calling the sheriff's office, because they're calling the dispatch center and get the dispatch center, they will transfer them to the state patrol, because it's a state highway.
Well, that's why I did, I guess.
Okay. And where's the traffic? Where's the bus stop?
It's the school.
Oh, the school. At D Street? D Street?
Yeah, and 506.
At D Street and 506, okay.
Isn't it? Doesn't the bus actually stop on 506?
I know.
Yes.
There's a red light crossing there like that.
I think a lot of times, it's been like this time of year. It's hunting season. Flying down through there, because it's dark, and I'm not thinking about it.
They're chasing that deer.
Yeah.
Oh, mine also got high.
Yeah, I know.
Alright. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, moving on to city business. Item one is the public hearing. Need a motion to open the public hearing. Should we adjourn this meeting and open the public hearing?
You don't have to actually adjourn. You can just open it and close it. But you do need to determine a time.
Okay. How much time would you like to allow?
We have one person signed up.
As much as the one person would like to speak?
Oh, no.
Alright.
No, 10 minutes.
Up to 10? Up to 10 minutes. Mandatory 10 minutes?
I don't want that. I should.
Alright, so a motion?
Make a motion that we open the public hearing 2019, proposed... Tax...
Proposed budget.
Proposed budget workshop.
Alright.
Public hearing.
Public hearing.
With a time limit.
With a time limit of 10 minutes.
Alright, we have a motion to open the public hearing on the proposed budget with a time limit of 10 minutes. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Sandra Hunter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Open this public hearing at 6:16 PM. Begin.
Please stop. It's not a free for all. This is a public hearing. So a reminder that this is a public hearing to make comment about budget-related items. It's not a question-and-answer period. It is a comment section for the public to share with council their feelings about the budget. On the list, we have signed up Cindy Radcliffe. So you can go first.
Yeah, I have several concerns about the budget. Number one, the numbers have changed. Some of them have changed since the last one. Couple of them went down. I'm not sure how that happened, except that. And the other issue I have is, for instance, the code... The building planner review guy, he only turns in his bills like every, you know, four or five months. That number for building permit inspection cost is gonna go up quite a bit, because that last bill is several months ago. In fact, some of our inspections on our house weren't on the last bill. So we actually owe him more money than the 2002 that is showing. So I guess my concern is, these numbers don't seem to reflect what actually has happened. The one that went down that I noticed just tonight was the attorney's bill. Last time it was at $10,000, and it's been changing to $8,000. None of my attorneys give money back, so I'm not sure what happened there. So how much can we trust these numbers? That was a concern. The other concern, and this is the major concern I have, is there's absolutely nothing in this budget for the average person in this town. We have nothing that will help them clean up their property. We have nothing for dumpsters once or twice a year for them to be able to take their trash. A lot of people in town don't have trucks. They can't afford the $45 or whatever it takes to dump garbage. We don't have anything for ground, so people can fix their own holes. You have nothing for road improvements. I don't see anything in here that is gonna improve the everyday lives of the people in the city. And there should be something, you know? Not just attorneys, not just the planner, not just, you know, for the clerks and people that work in the office. There needs to be something that improves their everyday life. And you have nothing in here. So I would hope that you would look at that and possibly add something to that. And then I would like to have a better set of numbers. I don't think these are accurate. And if you compare this one to the last one, and then also to what's online, you're gonna get different answers. There's also nothing in this budget about the money you've taken out of the sewer law. You spent $3,000. It wasn't in last one, I didn't see it.
Yes, it is. It was and it is.
It wasn't in last month's. Show it to me. In last one.
I'll show it to you. I can show it to you after you...
Okay, so where is it? On here? What line?
Very last expenditure.
On what page?
That would be for, what is it, 12 or 13?
So the last one, I looked several times, and there was nothing about how much you've taken out of the law. And you've only taken $525.
This year?
Yeah, but Mr. Sattifield was paid more than that. I have his bills.
He does other things for us.
No, but he... Those what he was paid for, those were separate than the... Than the...
That's the line I had. I'm sorry, I'm not supposed to be discussing with you.
So I've seen Mr. Sattifield's bill. There's two bills that come from that attorney's office.
And it was on the last one also. It's there, too, by the way, just to make it clear. Yeah, it's there.
You're not recognizing it, but it's there.
Okay, I didn't see it on the last one. But here's my problem with that. I've seen Mr. Sattifield's bill. That place sends us two bills. One for the prosecuting attorney or indigent attorney fees. And then Mr. Sattifield, for the netter place over here, sends a separate billing. It adds up more than $525, and I've never seen one of those bills. You can't trust these numbers unless you go back and look at the bills. And I've requested them, I've received them, and they're not the same. For the exact same reason why the attorney's number went down. You can't trust all these numbers. I know you've taken... Heads have taken more, unless... Where else did you get that money? From Mr. Sattifield? Anyway, why not?
Yeah, I'm sorry about that.
So again, there's nothing in here that helps the everyday life of people in this town that cleans their properties, to pay their bills, to, I don't know, get rid of their trash. There's nothing in here that helps them fix their roads. There's nothing in here that improves their life. But there's lots of money in here, tens of thousands of dollars, for attorneys and planners and code review and whatever that building inspector does. And that shouldn't be the way our budget works, is quarter million dollars. You should be able to put some money aside that makes their lives a little bit better.
Have another comment?
Can you explain why the attorney bills went down? The numbers went down?
I don't know what you're talking about, so I can't explain it until I know what you're talking about.
The city attorney was $10,000 and some change last time. This time it's $8,000 and some change.
Her year-to-date bills?
Yeah.
There was some that were... I can't. I need to look at it to tell you, to remember what happened.
What was the line number?
But you... No, but you have to understand, Cindy, that the numbers we gave out last time, these were preliminary quick estimates. This was not... That's one reason why I think a lot of cities don't give that out to the public, because the public doesn't understand, like, that that is preliminary numbers, and it's just to give them some kind of a ballpark. Okay, they're not accurate, they're not... Well, they're not... They're not ready to be presented to the public, which is why we don't present it to the public, most people. Last time, everybody had a cow, because they didn't get it presented to the public. So this year, I gave it out to you guys, and now there's misunderstanding and misinformation. It would be very helpful if you could come or call City Hall and talk to me about what your questions are, so that I can research it and find the answers for you, so that you can have correct information, because several of the things that you stated are not accurate, and it's just because you don't know what happened. And I can explain that to you, but this is not the forum for that.
Well, this is where we talk about it.
No, this is where you make your comments about the budget. And this is where you tell council what you want for your budget. The time to ask questions and figure out your information to make sure that you're correct is during business hours.
Okay, so...
So that's all I'm gonna...
That's just make a comment.
That's all I'm gonna say about it, because several other things... Yes, year-to-date does change. Yes, it does. Because sometimes I realize, as I go through this budget, and I look at that... Hang on, you asked!
No, I was asking, talking to you.
Excuse me, you asked, so let me answer. Now, sometimes they change, because as I go through the budget and I look at these numbers, I go, "That was assigned to the wrong line item. I need to correct that." And I make corrections. And that's probably what happened. I know in the attorney's fees that that has happened since I did the original numbers that I gave out to the council, is as I go through and I double-check numbers, and I find, oh, it was actually pulled out of the wrong line item, so let's move it to the correct line item. That would change her numbers. So it's not that it's not accurate, it's that you don't know what's happened. So that's why you call and say, "Hey, this is confusing to me. Can you explain this?" And I can take a second and look through it and refresh my memories to what happened and explain it to you, so that you don't get up here and make statements that are inaccurate.
Well, I don't believe they are inaccurate. They let me respond to that. I do not believe they are inaccurate, because I have seen the bills, and the bills have been coded. Now, it's quite possible that she has... Somebody in the office has done a line item that actually goes into the sewer legal bill instead of the civil legal bill. But if I review all those bills, and I have most of them... If I review all of them, and I look at what she is... Her explanation is, and where Jill has coded it, it looks appropriate, because most of them, most of the civil attorney's bills are for code enforcement or for... Very little of it is for the sewer. At least this year, I haven't looked at the other years. So I don't believe that the city attorney bill went down $2,000 because of coding errors. I just don't believe that, because I have most of those bills. So that's why I have questions about these numbers. Second, I called over to other cities, to two other cities in a local area, and I said, "Could you tell me how much you spent on dog licenses this year?" They gave me a number that fast, because everything's computerized. Ours are computerized. It's literally a matter of pulling it up and saying, "This is what it is today. It's computerized." So there should be no reason, other than the building inspector doesn't turn in his bill all the time in the hour, that these numbers shouldn't be as close and as tight, other than I understand and I accept the explanation that sometimes things get coded incorrectly. The attorney bills are not one of them, because...
How do you know?
Because I have seen the bills, and there's like four things on them, and she explains what it is, and then you code it off to the side. And none of those instances has a sewer coding been put on for civil, or vice versa.
It's not for sewer. It's code enforcement versus general attorney fees. So again, you don't have a clue, because you're determined.
Well, thank you for telling me that. Don't be ignorant, because I'm not. And again, I do not trust these for that very number.
So...
That's fine.
Yeah, can we stop this?
Yeah.
You guys got to get whatever you wanted off your back. And we... But yours seems like a good break.
Sorry, I apologize.
That's alright.
It's not professional.
Our... We've gone over our time, anyway. I think we've... We've beat it with the... The little stick.
I think the takeaways I heard from that, for the items that... For the 29... The budget, they were looking at items to help residents clean up the properties and street improvements and things like that. So that's what I... So that's what I took out of that. In fact, you know, there's thousands of dollars in here for street improvements already, and there's the continuing work on the limb and yard disposal site and things like that, so...
Within a month or two passed, we talked about getting a load of quick patch to go around and do little potholes and stuff, so...
We've got some of that in the works already.
Things that we do all year long.
We do have some works.
Do we get a hole with that for patch?
Yeah. If you're supposed to actually... When we do that, you...
We don't give them to keep.
No, no, but when you do that, you call, and you let us know where the hole is, and somehow we come there and they help us do it.
So we probably need to close our public hearing. So can we have a motion to close our public hearing?
I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing for the 2019 proposed budget.
Alright, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Parsons. All in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Public hearing is closed at 6:28 PM. Moving on to item number two. Council to consider resolution fifteen dash two zero one eight, declare emergency and ratify public works contract with Roglands Incorporated for sewer repair. There was a sewer repair that needed to happen. And you can see in your packet, there is the, here it is, the resolution from, with the description and the amount billed. Do everyone know, understand what happened?
Well, I'm, I'm trying to confuse why that's the city's responsibility. The homeowner wasn't responsible for any of that, to take care of it?
It was all in the city's portion.
Well, wasn't there just like a couple of years ago, I remember when I rented my house out, that the guy sent me, Scott sent me a letter where everybody had to have them scoped and checked and... So what happened there that it didn't get scoped and checked and why, so that this...
Everybody didn't have to have their scope and check, but they did have work done, but it was all done on the... So there's two portions of the site to the sewer. There's a private lateral, the private side sewer that goes from the property line to the house. And that portion is what that project was a couple of years ago, and they had that portion in place. The portion that was the problem was from the property line to the main, which is all on city, city property. And that was the problem area. So that's, so that is not the homeowner's responsibility. Their, their portion was fine, it was the city's connection and the city's portion.
But the sinkhole was on their property?
The sinkhole was in, in the yard of, of a different resident is where the sinkhole happened. And, but it was still in the city right-of-way, and so it was still our, and it was still, it was the main line that was the problem and the connection to the main line. So that was, it was all city.
So, this money that hadn't come out of our sewer money? Was there a budget set somewhere for emergency sewer repair certain day?
Yes, there is, it wasn't sufficient, but we have enough in the, in the remaining budget to cover it. So, yeah.
All right, any other questions? Motion? I'll make a motion. I move to approve resolution fifteen dash two zero one eight declaring the existence of public emergency for the situation requiring repairs and redirection of the sewer collection system lateral line and ratify the mayor's execution of a public works contract with Roglands Incorporated in the form attached to this resolution.
Joe, shall I have made a motion?
I know, I was trying, I was running through that in my head. I have made a motion. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Parsons. Any other discussion on this?
It's already done, right?
No?
Yes.
Well, yes, but we can still discuss it.
But if it's already done, then what difference does it make?
Because they can say aye and we can say nay, and we can still not, can still not work, so...
But it's already done?
It is, it is done.
The work is done.
Oh, oh, the work is done, oh, I thought you had that.
But officially, council has to approve, council has to approve the expenditure.
It's a kind of a no-brainer.
Yeah, it's a done deal, I mean, seriously.
All right, well, if there's no other, for the discussion on the, on the motion, all in favor of approving the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. They could hook it back up to the clay, I guess.
Yeah, right?
All right, moving on to item number three. Council discussion on home-based business regulation, regulations update.
Oh, I'm here now. We can talk about this, let's pump it, please. I've got other things in my brain right now and I haven't been able to spend time on it, so if we can just move it forward, even till January for the new year, so that we don't have to open it up every...
I'll make a motion that we take home-based businesses off our discussion list until January.
All right.
Is that okay, do we have to do that? Oh, good.
That's great, you say you're tabling it until January.
Okay.
We're going to need a motion for that.
For, to table something, technically I think you are, but no one's gonna die.
Seconded by, seconded by Mr. Parsons. All in favor of tabling the discussion on home-based businesses until the new year, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. All right, item number four, report on limb and yard waste disposal site.
Well, Judy was gonna have that, and when I made the agenda, I forgot that she wasn't gonna be here, so she had some numbers or something that you guys had worked on.
Yeah, we had some rules and some dates and some times and...
Yeah.
But I was wondering if we found anything about the right-of-way portion of it.
Well, the right-of-way portion, I have not been checking on that, was not assigned to the city to check on. What the city was assigned to check on was the insurance and how that would affect this, if it would be covered under the city's insurance. And the city insurance pool, what they told me was that if we wanted to do this kind of activity, that it possibly could fall under the city's insurance the way it is now. But they would wanna come out and meet with us and see the location and, and get some more details on what was happening. Because there is liability involved when you're talking about people driving up to a location if there's any kind of a car accident, if people are injured loading or unloading. So there's injuries with the chipper. Um, that, you know, so they said there are liabilities that they wanna check on and talk to the city about in order to make sure. But they said if you're doing it on someone else's property, especially doing it without a permit and authorization, they absolutely would not cover it. So, that was the information that...
Wasn't this done for years without all of this?
Yep.
And now it has to be all of this just to, just to make it easier for people to get rid of their rims?
Looks like if you, if you tear out the inside of this building and wanna put it back together again, you're gonna have to put in a fire suppression system, you know? Tear something apart sometimes when you go to use it again, you have to...
About nails.
I know.
I know.
You know, it's, it's, it's kind of the same way.
That's the thing, when you deal with the city, we have so many regulations and so many requirements that we have to meet in order to make sure that everything is safe and bubble wrapped so that nobody gets hurt. People do it on their own and just kinda, you know, whatever, that's fine. But when a city gets involved, we have huge liabilities involved. I mean, think about it, if we were doing it and somebody drove down with their truck and backed over whoever was there manning the station, what would happen?
Hasn't that ever happened? I mean, we're just like...
We've never had it, we've never had a station.
Do you wanna be responsible for that? I, I mean, I go back to that, when we had the downhill derby, I don't know if you were, you weren't here yet, but we had that downhill derby where the city was promoting and helping to put on the soapbox derby. And everybody freaked out because we had to get special liability insurance, because that's not a city event. It costs us three hundred and some odd dollars. Nothing's gonna happen, everybody's gonna be fine, we got the insurance. Well, somebody who was riding down the hill lost their brakes, and the brakes burned out and they were going down without brakes. Well, we had hay bales and a net down at the bottom in case something like that did happen. Well, a member of the public in trying to be nice decided to run up and grab the net to try and hold the net when the car hit it. Well, what happened? The person who was holding the net, once the car hit, flew back, smashed his head on the ground. They had to call the ambulance. And luckily, he turned out to be okay and he didn't come after the city. But some people would have, said, "This is a city event, I was at a city event, it wasn't safe," and they would've come after and sued the city. This gentleman luckily didn't do that, and he turned out, you know, eventually to be fine. But thank God we had that insurance to cover us just in case, because he could sue us for millions. And, I mean, you don't think that kind of stuff is gonna happen, but sitting here behind this desk, if there's something going on and I don't say something to you about that, I feel responsible. I feel like it's my job to protect the city and to protect the citizens' money. Because all this money that would go out is all out of everybody's pockets. And so when the city does an event, it, you know, we have responsibility and liability there. And so that's why we have to protect ourselves, so that we don't...
Whenever we have a sign a paper that says enter at your own risk.
That, why don't you ask the insurance company how they feel about that? They, they often require that for some events, but they're, and those aren't ironclad, they can...
I have, I have, or I have all those on my signs for my rides and the insurance...
And blah, blah.
Yeah, if you do this, it's blah, blah. And I've been sued twice, and they were totally, like, the one guy was sitting in a bubble and just started screaming, and Sarah's like, "What's wrong? I fell and hurt my shoulder, you didn't even stand up." And he got forty-five grand. Luckily, I had insurance.
There were a couple of comments from the...
If I could just make one more quick statement.
Can you do it?
Just because I tell you what the insurance company says, you as the city council can choose to do whatever you want. You can say, "I don't care, we wanna do it anyways." That's up to you guys, I'm just providing you with the information. That's what the insurance company says, their job is to protect the risk. And so, I mean, you guys can choose to do whatever you want.
We have a couple of comments from the audience, all right, Donna, I think Donna's first.
Now, I almost forgot, geez.
I know, it was a while.
Insurance thing. Why, how does the city not get a sign contacting the railroad? You're the only ones that have the authority to do that, to find out if they will give us permission to use that property. Who else is going to do it?
It's in recall?
No one asked me to do it, no one told me.
Well, you just said the city wasn't assigned to do it, I, I just...
City personnel was not asked to do that.
Oh.
I take my direction from the mayor, he has not asked me to handle that.
Oh, gee, Jill, I'm so sorry, I asked.
Here's another comment.
Are you gonna be getting a chipper, number one? And number two, have you picked a secondary site in case you can't use that one?
Not, not right now.
No? The old park, maybe, the old park up on Parks, didn't it? In, in the place you guys have the line?
There's a place up on the hill on five oh six that might...
Yeah, on S Street. Probably has a few dumps over there.
Not anymore, another one moved out.
And a chipper, are you gonna be getting a chipper?
I think the plan was, we were gonna charge five dollars and we would rent the chipper when the pile got to that point. Any bigger pieces, my husband was gonna come with the chainsaw and cut them in firewood size so that anybody in need for wood, it would be donated to them. That, that was the plan from, you know, before, so I don't know where we're at now. But we, right now, we're just renting a chipper.
So it needs to be on city property? Jill, it needs to be on city property?
Unless the, unless we get a lease.
Somewhere else, but you have to have authorization, and right now, we don't have authorization.
But the insurance...
Look for the insurance to cover it.
If we have the, if we have the authorization from the VNSF, yeah.
Well, with that being said, could you check to see if we have authorizations for that?
We don't have authorization. The city would have to, have to request it from Burlington Northern.
Okay, is that something that we asked the mayor to ask them to do?
Wasn't there something about a permit, they, you were talking, you mentioned it.
Yeah, you have to get a permit. I, I haven't done it myself, I know that you have to request a permit. I don't know what that would take, so it'd have to be, we could check into it and find out.
Okay. Is that...
If council wants me to do that, yeah, absolutely.
For the permits from them.
My understanding was that Judy was gonna check into that, that was what I was thinking from the last meeting, that I was gonna check on the insurance and they were gonna check with Burlington Northern, but, but no one ever asked me to, to look on that, so I didn't know I was supposed to do it. But if you guys want me to, I'm happy to do it.
Please.
Okay, let me write that down.
Any other discussion on the limb disposal?
Please, no.
That's one. Hearing your other discussion, limb disposal. We've completed our city business, and moving on to public comment, is there any additional public comment?
Cindy, also sign up for general comment.
Okay.
We're gonna spank this again.
Shut it.
Cindy Radcliffe, ten twenty, uh, whatever, seventh street. Mike, glad to see that you survived that last incident, I mean, welcome back. Again, I'm still looking at this budget. Three hundred and six dollars apparently is what you spent on road and street maintenance supplies for the year so far. That's not filling a whole lot of potholes, maybe we could, and, and next year, you wanna lower it from two thousand dollar budgeted down to fifteen hundred. Maybe we could keep that at two thousand, hey, that's a joke.
I'm writing, I'm writing your name down in the items you're talking about.
So, that would help, there's a lot of potholes, maybe that would help. And maybe it would help if you had the supplies for gravel or something and people could just come get it and fill holes. I would help some of the older people, well, not me, I'd get my husband to do it, but somebody would help with the gravel, put in the holes, you know, to help, things like that. And then maybe just another line item on, maybe a dumpster once or twice a year for people to get rid of their garbage. There's so many people here that live within a couple of dollars of their amount of money, and they don't have the money, forty-five dollars or whatever it costs to go to the dump. They don't have a truck, they can't get rid of the garbage and yet we're gonna go after them and, and tell them, "You gotta clean up your property." So we have a lot of low-income people that just don't have the funds. And if we could add something in here on the budget to help them out, yeah, there's gonna be slobs. I mean, we have their names, you know, so, I'm not talking about them. But there are a lot of people who've even asked us to help take away garbage or take away things they don't want. We ended up with a truck because of her, and, for no reason, my husband drug it away, so...
I gave you a truck, where do you want?
Anyway, if you could possibly look at that, that would be helpful. And think up some things that will help, you know, a lot of the people in this town clean up their properties instead of just adding more money to the attorney fees. Thank you.
All right, no other public comment? This meeting is adjourned at six forty-five P. M.